Do we have the staff report or not?
No, we're engaged. We're fine. Yeah. It was pretty light duty.
Mr. Chairman, under public hearings, number seventeen thirteen, Ken and Diane Oats.
Yes, ma'am.
We were unable to meet before this meeting, so if that could be continued to the July meeting.
Yes.
Same with Michelle Whalen. There seems to be some confusion on that one, so that needs to be continued.
Yep.
As well.
What about Brian Ryder?
He has requested to be continued, and that's on the agenda.
What's our next meeting?
July something.
July fourteenth.
Yeah. Catherine, do you need a second? Are you kind of... Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to...
All right. We're also gonna table the minutes as well, too.
I'm sorry, on the agenda, seven six four oh.
Yep.
We would continue that to your seven fourteen meeting.
Okay. Lot of continuances. Did you have something, Sylvia, before we do the agenda thing? That's continued.
It's already...
No, it's already on here. These are things that were... That we thought we may be reviewing, that staff is bringing up so odd. So, in the agenda, the minutes will be tabled. Seventeen thirteen, public hearing, Diane Oats. Twenty thirteen, Michelle Whalen, Lyman Blake. Seven six four oh, which is Fisher Lane subdivision. There was a potential to hear these tonight, but those three are continued, in addition to Brian Ryder and Nantucket Theater.
Do I need to make a motion to continue these guys? And we haven't even taken the agenda yet.
No, we haven't even taken the agenda, so that's fine. How about take the agenda first?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Are we holding the next?
Yes, they're tabled till the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table the minutes for April fourteenth, then May twelve, twenty fourteen, and then July fourteenth meeting.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Before you do anything else, Mr. McGlaughlin will not be with us tonight. He is... He's having some health issues at the moment, so just think good thoughts about him at this stage. That's all I can say. But, yeah, he's... It's very legitimate, so anyways.
I'll make a motion now of the public hearings to continue seventeen thirteen Oats, nineteen thirteen Ryder, twenty thirteen Whalen, ten fourteen Nantucket Theater, and seventy-six forty Fisher Lane subdivision to July fourteenth.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. So, that brings us to the first thing under public hearings, which is thirteen fourteen, South Valley Industrial Park Amendment, fourteen Davken Lane, and gentlemen, Leo, are you here for that? No?
We're... You wanna follow the agenda exactly?
Yeah, I think it's a pretty light agenda, so I think I'd like to, unless you... Someone come and I should know about?
No, I'll forget it.
Okay. Not seeing anyone here representing the applicant. Leslie, Andrew, any thoughts here?
Mr. Chairman, this is part of the South Valley Industrial MCD. It's a lot in the back.
Yep.
Sort of in the vicinity of the former pit location. They're not proposing to change the use of the site, they're just proposing to remove some storage containers and to build a structure with six units totaling about twenty-three-hundred square feet. Staff recommends approval. This seems like an improvement over the existing conditions.
Okay. Board members, is there any discussion on this? If anyone's interested, this is a public hearing at this stage, so if anyone would like to comment on it.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve for staff comment.
Okay. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Next thing before us is fourteen fourteen, Nantucket Golf Club. This is an amendment, and they're located on two fifty Milestone Road. There we go. Beautiful.
You don't have to talk much.
I've seen the plan.
I have another plan.
Do you got... Do any of you guys wanna see the plan? Leo brought it.
No.
Not the...
Let's see.
You're seeing... Okay, so we're all good here? Great.
Nope. Sit down.
Two years ago, the change in the specific.
Yep.
Their plans changed. They decided to downsize their progress, or the same hours, the full storage building didn't put in, along with additions to the business shopping fair shop, and the office itself. They started to be in, both the day, I did talk to Ed Pesci, he was a part of it, he started to get back in the meeting anyway. We had some discussions with the range, but I don't think the planning was wrong because I don't have further than done the original analysis. And from what I read was they had designed those attention bases to back, hundred percent courteous. They were kind of oversized, looked like they had to go over the pole, they handled everything. They changed in the use of the site, we know, all that drastic because there's gravel there now, we're going to pay it next. You might see a little increase in that off, but Ed, did you have some information that I said to him? I'm trying to think of my next step. Other than that, I'm here for any questions with the board.
Yeah. Board members, any questions from him? Staff, anything you need to do?
Mr. Chairman, I did talk with Ed Pesci, and I don't believe there's anything that can't be easily resolved, so I don't see any need to hold this up for another month, unless the board has some concerns.
I'm not hearing anything at the moment. Let me do due diligence. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this, since the public hearing is now open?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve with whatever comments Ed has signed in the office.
Go ahead. For a special... This is an amendment to a special permit. This should be four individuals, right? This doesn't need... Is it five? Sorry. My apologies. Mr. Mark Lindger?
Sure.
Were you good with closing the public hearing, sir?
Hmm?
You were good with closing the public hearing, weren't you?
Yep, absolutely.
My apologies.
My motion is to approve with pending Ed Pesci's comments, should they add something. Sign it in the office.
Yeah. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you, Nat, for doing that.
Yeah.
There's eight A and Rs before us at this point. I hope you've all had an opportunity to go through those. Is there anything you wanna take and review separately out of these? Otherwise, I'd accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse Cassano, thirty-three Sashaw Road, Arno, twenty-seven Easy Street, Dimmick, fifty-four Bartlett, John Sperry, twelve Clifton, Richmond, Graypoint Development, forty-eight Skyline, Donald Nero, no idea where that is, but it's Cotton Street and Fairgrounds Road, Donald Nero, McLean Street, Cotton Street, Fairgrounds Road, Nantucket one oh six Surfside Realty Trust, McLean and Cotton Street, et cetera, all in Surfside.
That motion is made and seconded?
Yes, seconded.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. All right. Next thing before us at this point is... You've got eight second dwellings. I'm just gonna ask that... Let me make this easy. On twenty-three Clarndon Street and on eight Middle Valley Road, if... No? We can either discuss them, but I can be really brief here. This is a short thing.
I've been to all of these properties.
But let me finish what I'm gonna say. On those two particular ones, I just request the board add an additional condition to make sure that they're graded to appropriate specifications. We don't often get an opportunity to do that on the board. So just on those two things, it's not... This really wasn't meant to be very complex. Was there anything else you wanted to isolate out on any of these?
No.
All right. So, I would accept...
Motion to approve secondary dwellings for two oh two at Yale Point, two hundred Hummer Pond, one eighty-three Pulpus Road, twelve R Old Westmore Farm, twenty-three Clarndon Street, twelve Essex, sixty-two Walsh, eight Middle Valley Road, with twenty-three Clarndon...
And eight Middle Valley.
...being graded to how... To them.
According to staff... Go ahead, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, can we also add to that list, twelve R Old Westmore Farm Road? That has access out onto Pilgrim.
They've shut it off. They've got a tree there now, and they're picking up the driveway. They can't even get up it.
Site plan shows access to...
Yeah, but they're intending to cut it off. They already have, because I was up there the other day, and there's a humongous tree right in the middle of the driveway down on Belton. You can't get by it.
Could...
So it's shut off. He told me he's shutting it off. He's coming in strictly from Westmore Farms. I asked him about that.
Do you think we could put it in as a condition, and then let staff handle the...
We could do an either-or on that one.
Yeah.
And this would be the standard condition about grading, cutting the vegetation prior to building permit before C out.
Middle Valley is way out there from the right. We're not asking to do an ocean.
That's probably a good-sized lot, the Middle Valley lot.
It is, but it's on the corner of some sort of a little easement that was out there also. It's right across from Don Burns', the tennis court, but you can't get to it from Middle Valley. You get to it from Middle Valley on your way in, and then you go up this little easement thing. So it doesn't have a driveway towards Middle Valley where it gets really bad. It's at the wider point at the beginning. I don't know what that thing is that accesses it. But I've been to every one of these properties lately. So what do you wanna do with twelve R Old Westmore?
Mr. Chairman, the issue is that the submitted site plan does not reflect interior access from Westmore. It reflects direct access to Pilgrim.
Okay, 'cause it's going.
So it'll have to either be... There'll have to be a clarification, so either...
So we should hold it up?
No.
No? Okay. No, I'm asking.
He's trying to build both of the... That's going up first. The little one's going up first, the secondary dwelling's going before the big one, because the big one's got the combination. But you want me to put in there, should access be from Pilgrim Road, then it would be... Need to be graded and the vegetation cut back?
Yes, if access is coming up from Pilgrim Road, it needs to be... That's second, if anyone's been there recently.
Well, yeah, twice this week.
Needs to be graded and cut.
Okay.
Straighten out. All right, so my motion, why don't I just do the ones that don't need that issue?
You were close. Finish the thought on twelve R Old Westmore.
Twelve R Old Westmore Road, I mean, twenty-three Clarndon graded, sixty-two, I mean, eight Middle Valley graded.
Okay.
Twelve R Old Westmore Road, should access be maintained from Pilgrim Road, then Pilgrim Road from Westchester? Needs to be graded and vegetation cut back to how far?
It's usually sixteen feet. We could do less.
I would do less.
Vegetation, fourteen foot travel away from sixteen on the vegetation.
Well, that's gonna be cutting into people's front yards. You have... It's a mess. Nobody comes in that way anymore for a reason.
I think what I'd prefer to do is leave this in the hands of staff to be able to go out and make a...
Figure out how far to cut it.
And make a reasonable decision, because it might be variable width as well, too.
It is. That's through staff?
Yeah, but I... And you guys are good with that, right? Conditionally? Okay.
With to be determined by staff. As I say, the access is gone. They've got a twenty-foot tree there that's about an eight-foot caliber.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
Yeah, all right. And you're... Are we all clear on where the motion is heading with these? Yeah? Hearing no discussion at this point, did...
Aye, seconded.
Motion was made and seconded, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you.
Previous plans.
Tried to keep it simple. The previous plan is thirty-five oh eight, Nantucket Cottage Hospital MCD. This is a minor modification discussion.
For a tent back there where they sell the tickets for pops in the back.
Sarah, you're not here for that, are you?
I'm not.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to exclude you. That's okay.
Mr. Chairman...
Yeah, please, go ahead.
This particular matter also requires a ZBA variance relief, because the tent will be up longer than thirty days, which is the limit in the bylaw.
Yep.
It's my understanding that the intention here is to put up a tent to have forums during the daytime where people could do brown bag lunch kind of thing, listen to a physician speak, or hear about their programming. It's not for cocktail parties, or fundraising events, or anything like that.
Right.
The use would be limited during regular business hours.
Okay.
And I don't think the intent, based on my understanding, is to draw extra people to the site who wouldn't be there already for something else.
Thank you, Leslie. Board members, is there any discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to... What am I doing here, Leslie?
You're gonna make a finding it's a minor modification.
I'll make a finding that it's a minor modification.
And...
No. A second.
Second. Is this a...
Did we have anything? I'm sorry. No? Okay. So the motion's made and seconded for approval?
That it's a minor modification.
Oh, just for a minor modification.
We have to make a finding that it is a minor modification, and then we make a motion to approve it.
All right, that's fine. All right, so the motion is for minor modification.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thanks. Six nine nine two, seven six six two, and seven six eight four, Pippen's Way. These are Form J lot releases, staff recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, one lot is for a buildable lot, the other lots for the roadway. We did have the pre-construction meeting at the site last week, and construction is beginning out there, so we recommend approval.
So moved.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Seven...
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's an active area.
Yeah.
They are starting construction work on the interior roadway only. The full Gardner Road construction won't begin until some later time.
Yeah.
So any work out on Gardner Road is just related to putting in infrastructure and other things on the interior roadway.
Got it. Thanks. So, seven zero eight four, Arrowhead Drive subdivision, this is again a Form J for lot releases and...
Mr. Chairman, the infrastructure out there is pretty much complete. I think they're asking for six lots. We recommend endorsement.
Board members, okay, thank you.
Yep, second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. Seven four nine one, John Adams Lane, this is for a Form J and release of the roadway escrow. Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, right now, the board's holding around forty-five thousand dollars in an escrow. Most of the work has been complete. Ed Pesci has done an inspection. He's recommending that we continue to hold twelve thousand dollars to just button it up, finish everything, and release the Form J. So we recommend endorsement of the Form J, and to release all of the funds remaining except for twelve thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Okay, you have a number of ZBA cases before you at this point, so pleasure of the board.
There were two that I think we wanted to comment on.
Go ahead.
Clausen.
All right. Go ahead.
Being forced to be appealed, Marcus's decision, another one of these lovely decisions, where he says an open-air thing, it's got a roof on it, it's like a cabana, but without sides.
Yep.
Is ground cover. And under the bylaw, a practical interpretation of the bylaw, it is not ground cover. So what kind of a recommendation do you want us to make, Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that the board make a recommendation that does not count towards ground cover. This particular structure is very much like a gazebo, or like an open porch, and I think to say that that counts towards ground cover is in conflict with the intent of the bylaw and the voters at town meeting who voted to exempt those things.
Didn't we do that three years ago, at town meeting or something like that?
It's not. There've been changes several times recently, but...
I remember those, it was quite a bit on this.
Yeah. Open porches do not count, gazebos do not count. This is kind of a hybrid situation.
It's just a roofed-over area to sit on, basically, and it doesn't have sides. One side doesn't count. It's just ludicrous to force people into the ZBA and waste their time on these ridiculous appeals. We've got a couple of them here.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion that we support the overturning of the CEO's decision that this counts for ground cover. Is that not where we're going?
Correct.
Okay. So that's your motion, and do I hear a second to it?
Please second it.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
All right, so that's gonna be a three to zero with Mrs. Howard abstaining, and...
I'll tell you the reason, man. It's nothing to do with the gazebo, it's the fact that we're doing something prior... Well, they're doing it prior to a denial from the board. To me, an appeal is when there's a denial, otherwise you don't have anything to appeal.
Well, he denied their building permit.
He did. I'm talking about us.
The bylaw requires us.
They're appealing, usually it's a planning board decision. So, I mean, that's what the zoning board of appeals is for.
Most of the time, I got appeals at the ZBA of the zoning enforcement officers' decisions, because that's what the bylaw says, you gotta appeal Marcus's decisions to the ZBA. Ninety percent of the appeals that came in were because of that.
I'm just giving you my opinion, and that's why I'm abstaining. Just explaining.
Julie, how did...
What was the other?
The other item was Cottage Hospital.
Right.
Since this board just voted to approve that application, I thought that should be transmitted to the ZBA in support of the variance application for the tent.
I'll make the motion to send a recommendation that we support, I guess we support granted relief for the Nantucket Cottage Hospital.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those... Hello? I'm sorry?
I'll abstain.
You're gonna abstain as well, too? Okay.
It was about three zip.
Three to one, yeah.
No, three zip.
Three to zip with Mrs. Howard abstaining, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Election of officers, do you wanna wait till John gets here before we do that?
No, I'll make a motion to nominate Barry as the chair.
Okay.
Second.
I'm gonna... Okay. I just...
We're not all lining up here, Barry.
No, 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 no. I shouldn't even be calling for a vote on this. Do you wanna call for the vote on that?
Or you want to go pro temp?
Yeah, do you understand? You know, well, you have to...
I'll call for the vote. Any other nominations for a chairman? I'll declare the nomination's closed. All those in favor of Barry Recker as chairman?
Aye.
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 Well, shouldn't I have seconded or something? If he can't...
You don't need to second on a small board, but you did second it, right?
Well, all right. I mean, I'm not opposed.
Thank you.
Don't get me wrong.
No, I didn't take it wrong.
I didn't know whether we did it, you know, procedurally, right?
I...
Nomination, but you couldn't...
That's why I'm stepping away from it, because I... Yeah, it's a little awkward for me to be calling for a vote on something that reflects personally on me.
That nominates you, yeah.
I can vote on it, but I just really shouldn't be...
I just wanna make sure.
I shouldn't have my fingers that deep in it.
Was that a unanimous vote?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so. And for vice chair?
I'll make a motion to elect...
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. That's great. Thank you. That's awesome.
I'll make a motion to retain Barry as the CPC representative from the planning board.
Second minute.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. I do enjoy that.
Well, you're also a representative up at the state.
True. So, yeah, I wouldn't wanna lose track of that either. Richmond Graypoint Development LLC, that was just for your information only, and I don't think there's anything more to be said on that.
No, the issue, Mr. Chairman, is, this is on lots that have not been released yet for any sort of development, so there's a host of issues here. So this is just FYI, in case you get any inquiries about it.
Thank you.
We're talking about the residential, Mr. Chairman, for the chair, we're talking about the residential part of it, up by, up in the back there.
Right, this is on Mayflower Circle, which is part of the Cedar Crest subdivision, and there are uses, uses buildings, other things that do not have any permits at all, and anyway, you should be aware.
Great, thank you. And there was a request from Dana Troxel from Woodbury Lane, I think you all got a copy of that by, by way of email.
The HDC, just, Mr. Chairman, before you go.
Yeah.
The HDC is dealing with it from our end.
Okay.
And we have gone to town council, and town council is sending a demand letter to have it removed by Mr. Poor.
Okay.
And that's where it is at the moment.
All right. Was there anything else from this board that you needed to deal with?
I believe, Leslie, you've had extensive conversations, we've had the conversation with him, and we've had a lot of correspondence.
Okay, I just wanted to check in with the rest of the board members, just to see if there was anything that we.
Well, I think he was asking us to whether we had jurisdiction over it, because it's in the roadway layout.
Right, and I think staff, we, staff talked about this, and they really didn't feel like this was going to rise to any further levels of, of the planning board being involved, but I do want to give you the opportunity, as a board, just to comment on it, but I'm.
It's a can of worms, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I don't think the fence should be in the roadway layout, when it's a land corded road, that you can't just willy-nilly create a lot, which is what he did for the ZVA, for the HDC purposes, it doesn't exist.
Yeah.
He put a lot line there and put a fence on it, in the roadway layout for road purposes, and we had no clue until we actually looked into it further, and Mr. Troxel brought it to our attention.
Was there anything that this board wanted to do in relation to it, is my question?
Is there anything we can do to support it, or?
Mr. Chairman, I've looked into this, I've talked with Mr. Troxel on several occasions, and basically, he owns a lot that was never part of the subdivision. The former owner was allowed access out onto Woodbury Lane, the access has since been blocked by a fence within the Woodbury Lane roadway layout, but it's pretty far off the side of the road, it's not impairing or impeding access. I really think this is an issue between two property owners, and not something that requires the involvement of the planning board.
Like the paper road, it's technically a paper road.
No, it's a road, land corded road.
Woodbury or Barnum?
Barnum.
The road.
Yeah, but the road that he's blocking is what I'm talking about, it's really a driveway cut.
The driveway cut was put in when Woodbury was put in, so they deliberately put a driveway cut to that property, though they was never deeded any legal right to use that driveway for access. But from an HDC point of view, there were a lot of problems. So we're, we've already voted to rescind it, and it's still sitting there. So he was looking for support from the planning board, because we're the ones that originally approved it.
Joe, did you have something? I'm sorry.
I, I agree with Leslie, it's between the two property owners, it shouldn't be a planning board issue, really.